Pledge their flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could the Secretary perform roll call tenets, please?
Okay.
Here.
Yes?
I am here.
Here.
Here?
Here. Okay, all the board members have received the minutes from the Secretary for the July 18th meeting. If there's no discussion, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So made.
Second.
Okay, motion is made a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Our first item on the agenda this evening is an adjourned public hearing for Bittero subdivision. Entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So be it.
Second.
Okay, motion made a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At the request of the applicant, they would like to be adjourned to the September 7th meeting. Before so, is there anybody here this evening that wants to speak on behalf of the Bittero subdivision? Okay, seeing none?
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
I'll say adjourn.
No, 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 adjourn.
Adjourn.
Okay. So motion was made, seconded by?
Me.
Lynn, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda this evening is public hearing for Kimmel subdivision. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hi, good evening.
I have Eric Rogi with Hudson Land Sun. I guess I can just start talking. We received the engineering comments. Everything looks, those are easy comments to handle. Were there any other comments?
Fortunately, we weren't able to review the plans in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
But we looked at them in the pre-meeting. For the most part, our comments were housekeeping, and I'm sure that you've taken care of it. The substantive comment was regarding the driveway on Lot 4.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, we regraded Lot 4 to avoid the steep section so we could get around the issue for paving of over 12 percent. We also provided the individual driveway plans for the shared driveway, so you can see that they're buildable separately.
Capable, yeah. But you're still requesting, I mean, I believe that there is still a requirement that the first 25 feet of the driveway on Lot 4 be paved. Are you still requesting to not do that?
Yeah, I think we've had some good discussions with the power authority. They're weary of us doing things, but they'll accept what we do.
Okay.
So I think the paving the first 20 feet or whatever would be acceptable to them.
Okay. And what's the maximum grade? Just out of curiosity, on the revised driveway? I mean, you said that it's below six, so I'm sure it's not?
Yeah, it's pretty flat.
Okay.
We come up to the house before the hill.
Mm-hmm.
So we avoid the whole steep area. Should've brought the paper plans. Thought this would be easier. Has the board received any correspondence from DEC on the seater?
No, we haven't received anything yet from DEC.
Okay, we haven't either. We've submitted everything. We sent all the plans. We have not heard anything.
Okay. How long ago did you send it to them?
It was before the last meeting, so end of May.
Okay.
I have heard, they're very backed up.
Do they have a timeframe where they have to answer?
No. One of the other things that we discussed in the pre-meeting, there's, I'm just curious, there's a lot of existing vegetation shown, some of the larger, more significant trees, and then you also show tree line on either side of the easement, which suggests to me that for the most part, the undeveloped lots are forested, that they're not shown in terms of, like, the more significant trees are shown at a certain size, at a certain caliber, but that everything outside that overhead, utility easement, is forested, and the areas for the house, the driveway, and the septic would all need to be graded and cleared. Could we get more clearly shown areas of disturbance in an area for each lot in the total?
Yeah, I have limited disturbance on the erosion control plan, so the clearing will just be an offset of that.
Okay. Can we show it on the map as well?
Yeah. Anything else?
Anything from you, John?
No, I mean, like Mr. Rogi mentioned, our letter is pretty straightforward. Some erosion control details we want to see. There's a minor grading issue on Lot 3 that we asked them to look at, providing top and bottom of wall elevations for the retaining walls that are proposed. And, you know, the driveway on Lot 4, they're going to pave the first 25 feet. It looks like they addressed all the issues with that. And just a couple minor comments on this one.
Okay.
So why don't you, through the public, go through what the proposal is at this point?
Sure.
And then we will go ahead and open the floor for public comment.
Okay. Sorry. The project is a subdivision of three existing lots located between Pine Ridge Drive and Old Hopewell Road, or Drive, I can't remember which it is. There is an existing house on one of the lots, so it's two vacant lots. We are proposing to subdivide into five lots for building of four new houses. The access for the houses, two of them, are going to have a shared driveway off of Pine Ridge Drive to the south. One of them is going to have access to Pine Ridge Drive from the Power Authority's existing dirt road that they use for accessing the transmission lines. And one of the lots is going to have access off of Old Hopewell Road. That's a county road. All the lots are going to be served by individual wells and septics. There's no wetlands or water bodies on the site other than a drainage ditch that comes off of Pine Ridge Drive that goes underneath the existing access easement drive. There's already a pipe there, so there's really no improvements necessary. The Power Authority's easement cuts right through the middle of the project, so we've located everything away from it with a good distance, and we've confirmed everything with the Power Authority that we have good clearances, and they've told us that no permitting is going to be necessary. The project is going to require coverage for a speed construction permit from the DEC because it's over an acre of disturbance, though it's under five acres, so we only need to do an erosion and control plan. The individual septics, we've already done soil testing, and it's been witnessed by the Health Department. Everything needs to be submitted to the Health Department for approval. Once we get far enough with this, we're going to send everything off to the county for approval. That is the project in a nutshell, all the big points.
Well, hold on. So formally, what you need, what we're going to do is I'm going to open up the floor to public comment. You'll have to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then ask us, then you can address the question to us.
Hello, everybody. I'm a resident on 110 Van Voorhees Terrace. And mom just falls, okay? And my property-
Oh, could you repeat the name and address again? The Secretary didn't?
Elizabeth Takas, at 110 Van Voorhees Terrace.
Okay.
And our property is up off of Pine Ridge. It used to be Pine Ridge, but then they changed to 110 quite a while ago. I'm just curious about where the power lines are. We tried to fight it when they were putting the power lines, because of the health problem. And that, you know, we was, because we had a lot of children up that way, and there were studies on it, but we just couldn't fight it. And we know several of the people that have lived under the power lines have obtained cancer. We lost a lot of people up there. So that's all bleeding. I don't mind the homes being there. I know people have to have a place to leave, but I'm just curious that with those power lines.
All right, well, we'll take, we'll have that, we'll have the applicant address that question.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ronald Nguyen. I live at 381 Old Hopewell Road, just up the street from where this proposed project is. My issues concerning this concern water. We've been, everyone on the street with the projects, water has come to them, us, to them, and sewer has come to them and not to us. When we asked, when the project on Old Hopewell was being done for possibility of bringing water and sewer, we were denied, saying the cost was too exorbitant, et cetera, et cetera. Now, we've been living in wells which have been drying up. I've lived there over 40 years. Wells, well levels have been going down. More houses hitting the groundwater, taking out our water again and again and again. We've had water issues for 43 years, as speaking to some of my neighbors who've also had those same water issues. The family we bought our house from has a house behind us. They're well dried up not that long ago. So water is a definite issue. Now you're putting six more houses there, more pressure on the groundwater levels, et cetera, and on our wells. In addition, I understand there's talk of 167 townhomes down the street. This is all going to put pressure. I thought that when new developments come in, they have to pay to bring in water and sewer. Apparently here, not. So issue here is water, and the fact that we've been denied those services for 40 something years. We've asked for it, we've pleaded. I was on the phone with town engineers when this project, the current project on Old Hopewell Road was being proposed and first started. And at first, it was promised, oh, yeah, we're going to be able, and of course, nothing happened. So I'm a bit disgruntled by the lack of response to our needs, and we've been taxpayers here for 40 something years, and doesn't seem to be any concern for that. Unless I've missed something, I think that's all I have to say. Oh, just a comment. I know the project, maybe the project that was just done on Old Hopewell Road is viewed, I don't know how it's viewed, but when we, it was discussed and the public hearings occurred, they said they were going to get rid of the ups and downs on that hill. And I live at the crest, right at the very top of the highest point on Old Hopewell Road, and turning in and out of my driveway has always been problematic, to say the least. And someone actually got killed pulling into my driveway, and it didn't correct anything. So that's just maybe shouldn't, is not appropriate for now, but I just thought, since I'm here before you, I would mention that to you. This project, which I'm sure costs millions and millions of dollars, did not do very much to alleviate the real problems on that street. The, I guess they think that the lights will slow people down, but I don't think it has and will. In fact, with the better quality of the road that's up there now, people are going faster. So I don't know. I guess I'm just telling you these things. But water is a very big concern. And more houses, more wells, it's going to drop water levels again. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The, what was his address?
Ronald Nguyen.
381?
381 Old Hopewell Road.
Hi, my name's Brian Ray. I'm at 304 Pine Ridge Drive. It's, I guess, kind of diagonal where the road is going to go, the, one of the drives. The gentleman did a great job. I was, I'm very concerned about water supply. I've been there 26 years. We've always had to conserve water with our well. We would love to have access to town water. He explained it well enough, so I won't go into that. I'm concerned about the, not so much, I understand if somebody wants to develop, they own the land, they want to do some, make progress, that's fine. But I am concerned about the driveway, if there's going to be construction, you know, flatbeds, concrete trucks and such going in on Pine Ridge. There's a hairpin turn there, and the site distance to that hairpin turn in the driveway is probably, I don't know what the plans say, I would say 120 feet. And that seems awfully tight. People, people that live in that neighborhood, in that area, tend to drive through there reasonably, but a lot of people use that as a cut-through from Old Hopewell Road to get from Wapinners to Fishville and 52, and they drive very aggressive. And I've been there 26 years, and the lady across the street from me, she's limited to a power wheelchair. It's Russian roulette just to get her mail. And if we have construction vehicles going in and out of that drive, I think there's going to be accidents. It's going to be a safety concern. That's all I have.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Bernadette Bodie. I live at 12 Winfield Terrace. And I would just like to reiterate about the danger on Pine Ridge. Driving here this evening, I was coming down Pine Ridge, past the proposed area where there are going to be three driveways coming out, and there were three vehicles coming up the hill that were halfway over into my lane. Nobody has respect for the road there. If there's any development along that road, whoever is being granted any kind of variance or any kind of consideration, needs to give the town land for future expansion of that road so that the property owners in that vicinity don't have to forfeit in the future, because that road's going to need to be widened in that area for safety, because it's just insane, as it is now. The traffic, I've lived in that area for over 20 years, and the traffic has grown exponentially, and it's very dangerous. Water is another concern for people in the wells. In addition to just the quantity of water being taken out, I have a greater concern in the area. There's a lot of rock, and in order to build in that area, you're going to have to do blasting, which is going to disturb the groundwater. And it could detriment, have great detriment to the quality of the water that all of us on wells in that vicinity, you know, we could, you know, we could lose the quality of our water, which is my great concern. My well gives me adequate water, and it's a good quality water, and I don't want it to be jeopardized by people that are blasting to put in new houses. I have concerns also about the privacy of the people that have had property and homes in that area. You're putting houses behind houses in people's private backyards, basically. And I don't know what kind of consideration the town is going to require new developers or new developments give to these people. Are they going to have to have buffers between the property lines that are there already and propose new development in people's private backyards? I mean, I think that's something that, you know, we're talking about putting houses in places where no one ever expected them to be in the past. These properties, they were landlocked. Mr. Kimmel's property is a house, it wasn't adequately sized for subdivision, but he's proposing putting two additional driveways in past where, you know, to put driveways, you know, houses behind other people's houses. So when people in that area bought their original houses, they had no conception that somebody in the future would be able to put houses right behind theirs. So I think that that's something that people have to have consideration for. That road where the two driveways are coming out on Pine Ridge is especially of concern for me. That's the one area where I've always had trouble in the wintertime, in a snowstorm, getting home, because the snow and ice, it's very steep there. There's about a 15 percent grade from the end of Mr. Kimmel's driveway up to where the top of, you know, that 100, you know, 100 feet beyond there. So I would be very concerned about the safety of that, and who would be responsible if someone gets killed there? I mean, that area, it's very dangerous with, you come down that hill, and cars are out in the middle of the road as it is on a good day. In the snow, it's even worse. The other concern I have is for the environmental issues. There are a lot of wildlife in the area that use that, those power line segue as, you know, a thoroughfare. Through the years, we've seen lots of turtles crossing the road there. I'm not sure if they're blending turtles, but I think that's something that needs to be investigated. And another issue is there are a lot of snakes around in these dry wooded areas, and I would want to question if any of those are endangered or threatened species. Okay, so that's pretty much my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Irma Farfaro. I'm owner of the property across the road on Old Hopewell Road, and my main concern is water.
The address, your address?
I'm sorry, 383 Old Hopewell Road.
Yeah, thank you.
And the water there is awful. As Mr. Nguyen had said, it's been a long battle for all of us in that area. I don't live there, but I have someone living there. And it's one person, and that well goes dry. My parents built the house years ago in the 1980s, early 1980s. They had water issues at that time. And my well has gone dry. I've had it re-drilled. It's 519 feet, and I still have a minimal amount of water coming in. It's been an ongoing problem, and I just can't imagine more wells going in around us. We won't have any water at all. So I hope that the town issues some, some kind of investigation there. I don't know if the Board of Health has approved the wells yet in that area. I also, the next concern is the access onto Old Hopewell Road. I think I know where his right-of-way or whatever it's called is, and my mother wanted to put a driveway coming out there. Instead, our driveway goes down and has to run parallel to Old Hopewell Road, because we weren't allowed access to Old Hopewell where I believe that driveway will be. I may be wrong. I also want to know if the county has given permission for access onto Old Hopewell Road. So it would be access onto Old Hopewell Road and whether the wells have been even approved by the Board of Health. And if not, I really want town water. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Frank Poples. I live at 293 Pine Ridge Drive for the past 39 years. And I would just reiterate all the good points all these people just made, from water to traffic. We don't need any more driveways coming out onto Pine Ridge Drive. We really don't. There's some hairpins turned there. It's really, this project is a really bad idea. Thank you.
My name is Dan Takas, and I live on 110 Van Voorhees Terrace. And I completely support the concerns of the individuals that spoke through I did. I have a, just an I-wonder question, and it may seem trivial, but why in your write-up do you have public hearing, a subdivision application to subdivide and create four lots and an additional one for a total of five? Why was it not five lots to begin with? As I say, it might seem trivial, but why not five to start with instead of saying four and one?
I can answer that quickly. That's just a, there's one existing house there, and then there are going to be four new houses, so it's technically the four new lots, and then one additional lot for the existing house. That's the overall for the subdivision.
Thank you much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Richard Farfaro, 389 Old Hopewell Road, and my concern is the water. Because we've all got no water on that side. And you tap in, the guy across the street from me used to be a friend of mine, and he moved out. And his water vein is tied into me. He forgot his hose on one day, and ran my well dry. I called him up, and I said, you using a lot of water? He says, oh, I forgot the hose. He shut it off. My well came back, but it took a week to clear up because it was all brown. So our concern is water.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
My name's Mariana Nguyen. I'm at 381 Old Hopewell Road. For 43 years, we've been begging the town for town water, and we were told over and over again, it's too much money, and if you want it, it's going to cost you a million dollars. But then these developers come in, and automatically, they get water. I know they pay for it, but we don't count. 43 years we've been living there, paying taxes on a very dangerous road, and struggling with water. When my children were little, I couldn't even run the washing machine through one cycle because the well would turn off, and we'd have no water. And now, we were told yesterday that somebody is buying the lot next to our house, and that they're going to be hydroponic farmers, and they're going to get water. We need to know about this water situation. It's really a basic requirement of life, and I'm sick and tired of fighting with everybody about it, and they just tell me, no. They ripped up our whole street, put in new gas lines. They couldn't put in water pipes? I mean, the whole, to me, the big expense would be the digging of the trenches. They did that, but they refused to put water in. We don't count. Only the new people who come up in new developments, Only the new people who come up in new, in new developments, they count and we don't. And I'm disgusted with it, really. How many years have we been putting up with this? And it's nonsense. Keep putting in more houses, more houses, the well, the well water drop, levels drop and nobody cares. That's all.
I know I spoke before, but I wanted to add to that. Not only has our water levels dropped, we've gone through, I don't know how many pumps because we had no water levels and they ran down over the minutest thing, but the quality of the water also, cements and all those kinds of things. The water levels aren't good. You can take my word for it, I've watched it for 43 years. And to propose more houses with more wells and more septics is not going to be good environmentally and it's not going to be good for the quality of life, people living, for the quality of life for people living in this area. I also know that the problems they cite concerning the driving on that, on Pine Ridge, that's a big concern too. And just as it's a concern on Old Hopewell Road and this whole project did not take away the danger that's on that road, the hills going up and down. She was talking about Pine Ridge Drive in, in the winter. That whole Hopewell Road in the winter is, you come down the hill, guys can't stop. I've seen it. Anyway, water is the central issue though and I'd really like to understand. I heard that there was discussion about bringing water, but from what you're saying, I don't know. Since they're building wells, I, I'm leery of the fact that there'll ever be water provided. And it's only a few people, what, 10, 12 houses that don't have water on that street. And there's continued refusal to do that really mirrors what my wife was just saying, that don't care about us. We've been dutifully paying our taxes for 40-something years. Could we ask for a little service? We're willing to pay for it, but...
It's not really about...
No, no, no. We'll pay for the cost of the water, just like everybody else does, just like that.
Well, yeah, and the water is not up to us to make that decision. That's up to the town board. We have no control over, you know, water extensions.
I, I appreciate that, but I, I just didn't understand when the project was being done and we spoke to the engineers and to all those people and they said, "Oh yeah, we, perhaps we could put that in." And then all of a sudden it was, "Oh no, 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 we can't." No discussion. Anyway, thank you for listening. I'm sorry if I'm talking whatever.
That's okay.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. Probably a lot of items here that the engineer is going to have to address. Probably going to have to work with staff in addressing some of the issues. Probably going to go ahead and probably look to adjourn the public hearing to a future date. I don't know how much time you're going to need to kind of work on some of these issues. Can you let us know how long you have?
For the wells, we'll look into that. It's for four new houses, there's really not a lot to do for checking of that. They're not big, they're not big producers of water, so.
Have you talked to the health department at all regarding water?
No, we haven't sent anything to them yet, but I don't know if they ever, I don't think they comment on shortages of water. If you're really looking at separations for septic, but we can check with them.
Just check with them. Check, check with them and see what you can get. Excuse me, please, just one conversation. Thank you. All right, has any board members have any, any questions, any concerns you want to bring up at this point with the applicant? Not yet. I'd like to see how they address all the concerns that we have. Okay. All right. Staff, have any, any additional questions or concerns with the applicant at this point?
I would just say that at some point when they make applications to the health department, if the health department is aware of well issues in the area, they will sometimes require that test well and monitoring of neighboring wells program be put together. That may be appropriate here. At the very least, I, I believe there's going to have to be at least one test well as part of the approval process with the health department. So there will be some further investigation done, but we'll let the applicants look into, you know, what, what might be required and what they might be able to do.
I got a quick question. If the Board of Health is not aware of any water shortages or anything over there, how would they become aware?
People have to let them know. The public has to let them know.
Yeah. So they would contact county Board of Health?
Typically, if, if, if they're seeing multiple properties in one area having to re-drill wells or, because if they're doing it properly, they're, they're getting a well permit and that goes to the health department as well. So if they see a bunch of properties in the same area going from 300-foot wells to 600-foot wells, that triggers, you know, that raises a red flag with them and any new applications come in, they'll probably make them do some kind of testing and monitoring of anybody's, you know, who's willing to, to let them do it. I mean, the neighbors would have to be willing to let them monitor the well during the pump test program, but it's, it's been done before. It's not, it's, it's a pretty common thing.
Okay.
The only other thing I would add is, you know, if you're going in and you're adding the areas of disturbance like we discussed earlier, we can look for opportunities to minimize that area of disturbance. We can look for opportunities to, to replant areas that were cleared, but could, could, you know, could be suited well with replantings. But that would, you know, mitigate the impact on the water table. Not completely, but it would, it would help. So we'll, we'll certainly be looking at that with your next draft.
Okay. All right. So I guess at this time, we're going to look to adjourn the public hearing. Do you have one more question?
No, thank you.
Yeah, stand up the mic.
I'm sorry. Will we be informed when you re-adjourn a hearing on this matter?
Yes, we're going to, we're actually, we're, I'm actually going to consult with Secretary to get a date, so we're going to adjourn it to a certain date.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Go back to, we're saying, how much time do you think you're going to need to work on some of these issues, so we don't bring you back too early?
When's the next submission done?
The next, I'll let the secretary answer.
Then not that meeting, the next one? That sounds good to me.
That'll work. Okay, so September 19th. So entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to September 19th.
Second.
Motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. We'll see you on the 19th. Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding site plan and special All right, good evening. Is state name it, name it for the record and who you're representing?
Yep, my name is Brady Curlichi.
Sorry, hold on. Give them a second to go out, out of the room.
Good evening, name's Brady Curlichi. Representing...
You can talk into the mic?
Oh, yep.
You can take it out if it, it's okay. If it's too low for you.
Maybe this will work. Brady Curlichi, representing the applicant, Jiffy Loop, Seven MultiSite Solutions as the architect and engineer.
Oh, excuse me, in the back, can we?
Mr. Nguyen.
Excuse me, could we take the conversation out of the room, please? We can't hear up here. Okay, try it again.
Yep, name is Brady Curlichi, representing Seven MultiSite Solutions and Jiffy Loop.
Okay, all right. I believe you received the copy of the resolution from the planner's office?
Yes.
Okay, you've gone through it and you have no, no objections to as, as it's been written?
No objections as written.
Okay. All right, so this is pretty straightforward then. We have a resolution, a site development plan and special permit. Entertain a motion to approve the site plan as drafted by the planner.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
I'd like to thank all of you.
Okay, you're welcome. Can I ask you a favor on your way out? Could you just close the door for us? Thank you. We all had the same thought, same time. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion of Hammond, O'Leary,
Want to talk into the mic?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Bill Povell, I'm the engineer for the applicant. Sean Witkowski. Sean owns this parcel, which is on Chelsea Road on the corner of Booth Boulevard. And then we're here, here on behalf of his parcel. Mary O'Leary, which owns this parcel here, and Nicole Hammond, which owns this larger piece here. And what we're proposing is a lot line realignment, which would take the land behind Mr. Witkowski's parcel, this area in the dark shaded area, and add it to his piece to make it bigger. The same would be true to add this shaded area to the back of Ms. O'Leary's parcel. So it's a simple lot line realignment, which is making the two smaller lots larger.
Make them bigger.
Hammond owns that strip in the back now, right?
Yes.
All right. You received the, the letters from the planner and engineer?
Did not.
Oh, you didn't?
Ours is very brief.
I don't think there's any room.
Yeah, ours is very brief. It's just pointing out two things, that one of the parcels that is increasing in size is currently below its minimum lot requirement. It will still be below its minimum lot requirement, but in the past, there's been no need for variance for that, that is, you know, it's existing nonconformity, it's improving in condition. What we would add to that is that you've identified a number of existing nonconformities in the bulk table that would require variances. They would not require variances. You don't have to go to the ZPA for any of those because the lot lines that they relate to are not changing.
Okay.
So, no, it's, it's a very clean bill from us.
Yeah, and we had same comment about the variances, just, you know, take those, those references off. And then on those shaded areas, I don't know, you probably didn't catch it, but the grid numbers are reversed. So if you, if you look at it on the plan, it appears that the darker shaded piece is going to that lot, but they're, they're very similar.
You know what it is? The numbers are off by one.
I know. Yeah, they're almost the same. It's very confusing looking at it.
Yeah, Wendy in my office was putting it together and I had her flip a couple and I must have missed that one.
Yeah, so, you know, very minor.
All right, so, yeah, obviously we discussed it earlier. I mean, it's a very minor application. So the, the first order of biz we have is, we don't see the need for a public hearing because there's going to be no, there's no new development there. It's just basically swapping land to make those other two lots a little more conforming. So one thing we need to do is we need to...
Do they plan a clearing there?
That I don't know.
Because I know those two things are, are a real mess.
I, I, if I know Sean, he probably will clean it up.
Yeah, on the backside of the center lot, the other house that's on Booth is about, what, four feet off the property line? The one that's there?
Is there a need that, that something needs to be cleaned up back there?
I would, I would like to just probably make sure they keep screening on that, on the, the rearward property line where it is now. Because I know that the house, what's the first...
Talking on the back, on the back property line.
On the backside of that center lot, the other house is there, is like really close to the property line, because those are skinny lots that go back on Booth.
Okay.
Just to, you know, just make sure they leave some screening on the back, because if they clear those, I mean, they're going to be right in that guy's bedroom window on the corner.
Could they add a note to the planner's...
I was going to say...
Yeah, we should, because there's trees and everything there now. Like I said, I think...
I mean, they're not proposing any work, but just for future, just to, to maintain the rear, the rear yard.
Rear screening, yeah.
Or screening in the rear yard.
Yeah.
For the adjacent neighbors.
Yeah, like I said, because they'll be looking right near the guy's bedroom window, because his house is literally five or six feet off the property line. That was built in the 50s, that house.
Okay.
And that was always the buffer, is those, is that little L-shaped lot.
Right, those two there. With the applicant.
See what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. With the applicant. Do you think the applicant would have an issue with putting that note on?
That I'd have to ask him.
Just to see.
I'd have to go ask him.
At least to maintain screening there to keep the privacy for the, you know, I know it would be, I guess, put on both of those, on both of those lots, you know?
How about a note that there would be a certain footage that would be maintained or like a stockade fence would have, you know, if they want to clear right to the property line, maybe they would put up a stockade fence.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
Some form of screening. That the screening will be maintained or replaced with...
Yeah, just anything.
That's why, that's why they have the option.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, that's cool. That would work?
Yep.
Okay, everybody's good with that one?
Yep.
All right. Okay, so that would be just a, obviously that would be a condition.
Sure.
Yeah, that's the R20 district, so the minimum rear yard is...
So how much, 40 feet?
40 feet.
Okay.
How deep are those shaded areas, do you think?
They're like 75 feet roughly.
Okay.
But for an accessory building, less than 15 feet in height, it's 10 feet.
A shed back there. One of the rules about, you know, clearing the land, cutting down trees in the rear yard, you can do that, right? I mean, they could, they could clear the vegetation back to their rear yard. They just couldn't build anything back there.
Yep.
So this note would be requesting the maintenance of the existing vegetation in the rear yard and if it, if they choose to clear it, that they would need to replace it with some form of screening, like a stockade fence or a vegetated screen.
I mean, technically, if they were going to build a shed back there, it's, you know, the most they could open, you know, the most, the minimum, there would be left, would be 15 feet, so.
10, 10 feet, right?
It's according to this, it's 10 feet.
Oh, it's 10.
The shed has to be less than 15 feet.
The shed has to be, so long as the shed is less than 15 feet high.
Oh, okay.
It could be 10 feet off the property.
One hundred forty-four square feet, then it can be within 10 feet. If it's bigger than that, then it's got to be 40 feet.
So 10 feet. So to maintain the last 10 feet or would have to put screening in?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's more reasonable than the other backyard of 40 feet, of asking them to maintain 40 feet of vegetation or put in a fence.
Yeah.
40 feet of vegetation is far from a screen.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
A stockade fence is...
No, 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 just to keep screening between that other guy's house.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And we can work that as a condition into the, the resolution if you would like me to draft it, or we can wait to hear back from the applicant as to how they feel about this.
There. And that should be us. That should be us.
Are there any questions, just please?
We did not pick up any.
Okay.
Alright. So, okay, so with that said, how do we feel with the public hearing?
I don't think he needs it.
No, alright. So entertain a motion to waive the public hearing?
I'll make it. Second.
Okay, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is it too early to give him a resolution on this with those improvements? That he has to do?
I don't see what else.
Move him along.
You have no, there's no other issues here. I mean, there's no development on the property being proposed. There's nothing.
This is an easy one.
Protecting, right, protecting the neighbor on the other side with some type of screening or buffer.
I'll add a condition as discussed regarding backyard screening and have a resolution ready for the next meeting if you'd like.
And just correct those numbers.
Yeah, no, I'll reference your letter.
Well, yeah, it's well gotta get resubmitted, but, alright. So, entertain a motion to have the planner draft the resolution of approval?
I'll make the resolution. I'll sign the motion.
Motion's made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so our last item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual review for Aguado subdivision.
Back again. Bill Povell, engineer for the applicant. Where's the, okay, the Dylan Aguado. They're in the process of purchasing a thirty-four acre parcel on Ketchum Town Road. There's a small frontage area, which is on Ketchum Town Road here. And then, it's an odd shaped lot with a small connecting parcel to the larger piece in the back. Much of the property is encumbered by DEC wetlands. The wetlands were just recently flagged by Mike Nowicki. New York State DEC went out there, validated. So, within the last month, we've had the wetlands validated. So, now that we, you know, for us to move forward, knowing exactly where they're at. There is a portion of the wetland that comes down through this area. And then, much of the back area here is wetlands. And then, there's an upland buildable area in the central portion of the property. We're here tonight just for a conceptual, just to get some feedback from the board. But what the applicant would like to do is create a simple two lot subdivision, where the acreage would be pretty much as close to equal as possible. When you're looking at anywhere from seventeen, seventeen acre lots, plus or minus, with the two lots, it would require an eight hundred foot shared driveway to get back to the buildable area on the lot. We know we'd have to go to DEC to get a wetland disturbance permit in order to have access. Conversations with the DEC have already started. They seem to understand the need to cross this thin portion of the wetlands to provide access to the usable land on the parcel. Because the front of the parcel, it's actually very, it's only maybe a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty feet wide. And most of it's encumbered by the buffer. So, it's not really buildable in the front, so. With that being said, we propose just two houses, again, splitting the buildable area, and we're gonna try and split the lot size.
Okay. I know we had some discussion earlier regarding the driveway. Because, I mean, obviously, this, you know, this proposal's gonna need a shared driveway regardless of trying to minimize the impact on the wetlands, you know, to get to the buildable area. But, the town code states you have to show that you can have two independent driveways. Think that one, the one lot doesn't have the one lot to my, to my right, looks like it doesn't have the access to the road?
It does.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, we've made, with this particular layout, we've made, maintained a minimum of fifty feet width-wide hole for each lot, so we could have technically-
So you've had, so both lots will have frontage on the road?
Technically could have a driveway that would need two separate DEC disturbance permits.
Right.
But the goal, obviously, would be to minimize the disturbance to wetlands and have a shared driveway.
But you could still do that in the future if they had to.
If they had to.
And you'd get a letter from the DEC stating that they could do that?
Well, the DEC, I don't, the DEC is not gonna give us a letter stating that they're gonna, they would approve that. They would just tell us that if there were two driveways, you would need two separate permits.
Yeah, so that, yeah, I think it's more-
And they're always gonna push us to keep the disturbance to a minimum.
I know they are, but then there's the town rule that says you have to have certain footage.
I think they would satisfy the town rule if they, if they showed in a conceptual plan that each lot does have fifty foot wide access to the road, that hypothetically, they could come back, they could get a town wetland disturbance permit.
Do they have to prove that, though? Do they have to prove that?
No, they wouldn't, well, I mean, there's no real way to prove that in the future they would get a DEC permit and they would get a town permit for wetland disturbance to build a second driveway. But, the code asks that, conceptually speaking, you demonstrate that it is feasible.
That it's feasible, okay.
So that we don't get boxed into a situation where it's literally impossible, right? Or for whatever reason, the way that the lots have been configured, you can't have your own driveway.
Okay.
The other thing I would mention is the, the minimum lot area can only be, I mean, I think that you'll have ample room, but when you resubmit, if you can go ahead and do math, only ten percent of each lot, in terms of minimum lot area requirement, can be encumbered. So you can highlight what areas in each lot that is and demonstrate that you meet, which I'm sure you will.
But we're so, yeah, we're so far above that. That's not a, that's not a problem.
I have no doubt that you'll make it. I just would appreciate that as an additional item on the bulk table.
Sure.
And then, from, from my perspective, you know, this is, you know, this, this looks good provided that DEC, you know, allows you to move forward in a way that's gonna be economical and feasible.
Right. And I believe technically, we would also need a town wetland disturbance permit, which would go jointly with the DEC.
What's the, I mean, it's, it's a big lot, so the perspective is tricky on me. Do you know how far away each of those homes is from the closest wetland buffer, do you think?
From the buffer itself, right now, we're showing it at like a hundred and fifty feet. But we still haven't nailed down the exact location just yet. We're still waiting for the rest of the survey to be completed. You know, we, we have some, this is showing the preliminary survey for conceptual purposes.
It looked like there was plenty of room back there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's-
This is wetland shown on it. Do you have flood plans on the site as well?
I believe there are in the, in the wetland area. But this buildable area in the back, just the depth alone is five hundred plus feet to put a house, so there's plenty of room.
Yeah. Yeah, there's definitely a lot of, definitely a lot of space to move it around. Alright. Anybody else have any questions for the, no?
No.
Good project. Okay. Alright, so I mean, I think you just, you button up all the issues and provide a full application. We can move forward from there.
Great. Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, have a good night.
You too. Alright. So. Are we gonna end the agenda? Is there any other business we need to discuss this evening?
I have a question. With the Kimmel subdivision, should we actually go look at that to see about this site distance issue that a couple people have brought up?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Because I seem to be a concern for a few folks, and we can just remedy that by taking a look at it.
Okay, see if you guys wanna go do a field trip.
Might also be good to, I mean, I'm sure, we were planning on this anyway, but we need to get the the town superintendent of highways and the county highway department-
Can we get everybody together then at one time to do this?
That might be a little less practical, but I would like a letter from each of them commenting on the project, right?
I do think that's a good idea. That's, that's a pretty tough area.
Yeah, that's a tou, yeah, I'd like to definitely see some concrete on that water, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, the water issue, that's a county issue. That's a county road, right?
Yes.
One of them is a county road and one of them is a town.
I know, but Old Hope Well seems to be the water issue.
Yeah, but in terms of the wells you're talking about.
So those people are not allowed to hook up to that water? Maybe it's coming right up on Old Hope Well Road?
There is no water main.
Does it go, I don't think there's water there.
There's no water there?
That's why they don't have wells.
Yeah, I don't think there's water there.
It's gonna cost a million dollars to get the water to me.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah, I thought they-
Because that was, that was the discussion when that other development was gonna go on, Old Hope Well. He was gonna run water from, from the west, you know, east towards his property.
So he dug that whole road up and didn't put water in it?
Because that's a county issue. That's a county road.
Yeah, the county's not gonna do that.
The county's not gonna do that?
That benefits, that doesn't benefit them at all.
It was, it was, it was, the town board had discussions regarding that.
Yeah, that would have been the time to do it, save us a lot of money.
Because they, the county did approach it, the town board regarding that. It's called a betterment, so you can have an add-on onto a highway work project. But, you know, the cost of it would have been at the, at the town, at the town's expense. And my, they were looking at this area, Old Hope Well Road, and I think a little bit of further up by Route Nine. And I think the numbers came back about four million dollars. But it was, you know, it wasn't serving a whole lot of properties, so that was ultimately the issue.
But there's water on, at the base of Cedar Hill, and it goes to the development that's across the street. I don't remember the name of it.
Oh, the newer one?
No. Well, actually, the one that the Toll Brothers put in has water, too, correct?
Yeah.
So that passes, doesn't that pass their properties or just?
It's just to the west.
Just west of them, right?
Right. And then, Scott Drive is another main. So.
If this is a problem with water in that area because the wells are drying up, doesn't the Board of Health have to intervene with this? If all those people petition this?
Yeah. They, they can certainly, like I said, you know, if there, if there are known problems in that area, we can look into this a little bit as well, but it really does become a Board of Health issue. But if there are known problems, they will request that the applicant do some kind of pump test program where they're, they have one well on their property that they can monitor, and then they typically request that they approach all the adjacent neighbors and ask them if they would like to have their well monitored while they do the pump test. They're not required to, but if it were me, I'd want it monitored.
What ward is that there? Is that three?
I'm sorry?
Is that Ward Three there, on Old Hope Well Road?
I think it's Ward Two.
It is Two, still?
The, there's a project that I believe the Cedar Hill properties, about two, two properties to the west of this, which is in the water district. They have, they were looking at a some, some type of special permit subdivision. It's not a conservation subdivision, it's, I forgot what it was.
It's like a planned residential development or something. It's, it's something I've never seen before. But it's, it's following similar-
It's similar to what was approved for Fieldstone years ago.
We just really need to start addressing these water issues all over the place.
So. I mean, there were, like I said, there were, there were some numbers that were crunched, I wanna say probably twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen, when they were letting the contracts for the work on Old Hope Well Road, but that was to run, you know, some water main there, but, you know, most of the property owners here were complaining, we're, we're back on Pine Ridge, so. That's, that was, there were no estimates for getting the water back up that way. It was just, it was an essence to just close the loop between Shamrock and Scott Drive. And then, to close the loop between Losy Road and Route Nine. For the two proposals that were, were looked at, you know, back at that time, right?
So back to the, back to the previous question, do we wanna go out and do a save visit now there?
I think so.
Yeah, because we wanna look at that driveway issue, too, right?
Absolutely.
So. Question is, when do you wanna? When would you guys like to do this?
What time in the morning are we gonna start this, Lynn? I just wanna plan my day off.
You wanna go to bed early?
No.
I'm always waking up early.
Nothing before eight on a Saturday, please.
Are we going on Saturday?
I was thinking seven.
I know.
Are you guys busy this week during the week?
Last time you guys came up with seven and a half, didn't show up.
I was there.
Alright, so when, so what do you, you guys wanna do a Saturday then, still?
I was tomorrow, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, I could do it during the week, too.
Wednesday?
We do it early during the week.
Let's do it. What are you gonna do? Oh, you can't do it in the week.
I won't do it.
How about the evening?
Tomorrow morning.
I'll send, I'll send Pete. I'm, I'm out on this project.
Or we could do the evening during the week, too.
I know, I know the property pretty well. I mean, the, I'll tell you, the, the site distance on Old Hope Well at that driveway, they have plenty. It's very tight up the last, the shared driveway off of Pine Ridge. That one's, that one's tight. But.
But they don't even have that new driveway on the plant yet, right? That they're proposing?
No, they're all, everything's on it.
The new one, avoiding the grade? I mean?
That's on Lot Four, though. The shared driveways, Lot Two and Three.
Well, the other option is, though, there's already a driveway there. So theoretically, you could make it a shared driveway for three lots.
One of, a driveway coming off of the existing, going over to-
But the availability to use the other one if they have to in the future?
Yeah, right, we have the conception.
I think we might have looked at that, but the owner didn't want a three driveway situation, but, you know, that could be an option.
I mean, that, I looked at it quickly and, you know, because they're looking at a shared driveway next to an existing driveway. And the shared drive, the, the existing driveway is pretty short, well, I mean-
Relatively short.
Relatively short now, and then it goes back into that system of dirt roads.
Dirt roads, yeah. It might be something to explore. It is a unique situation where the, the developer is the property owner of the existing house, right? So it's not shocking that he does not want a shared driveway to come off of his.
Right, off of his driveway, yeah, so he's gonna wanna stay with that. But again, it's a matter of seeing what he's got proposed.
I will see, I mean, you'll see what makes sense when you get out there.
We can formulate an idea from what's on paper. That's more or less.
Right.
Well, that's what we need to do, is everybody wants to visualize what's on, what's on the plant side, so.
And looking at the topo on parcel access, the woman was correct, there's a bit of a grade.
Yeah. Alright, so. When you wanna do Saturday? Is that?
I'm good Saturday.
I won't be here Saturday.
I'm out. I'm good during the week.
Do a week from, do you wanna do a week from Saturday?
I'll be in Nashville then.
You know, not for nothing. I'm good this week.
I'm good all this week. That's about it, and I'm gone for a week after that. And I'm going this weekend.
That's like late afternoon.
It's fine with me. Yeah, late afternoon during the week is cool.
Late afternoon is fine by me.
Just not Thursday.
Just not Thursday? There's Tuesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday works good for me.
Yeah.
Wednesday's good for me.
4:30, 5 o'clock?
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock on Wednesday?
Okay.
Okay. So August 3rd, so make a motion to...
So May.
...site visit for the Kimmel subdivision for August 3rd at 5:00 PM.
You want me to see if Pete's available?
Yeah.
That's 325 Pine Ridge, right? 325 Pine Ridge? What's the, no, it's not, that's Kimmel. What's the address there?
That is Kimmel.
That is, okay, yeah, 325 Pine Ridge, right.
Okay, so that's the, that's the plan. All right, so with all that said...
5 o'clock.
Any other business we need to talk about? Okay, we got nothing, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.